The Pitt County Board of Commissioners Meeting will begin in 10 seconds.
Good evening, this is the March 23rd Pitt County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Tonight, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners are conducting their meeting, but the nine individual county commissioners are with us remote by telephone. And at this point, I will turn it over to our Chairman, Melvin McLawhorn, again, who is removed.
Good evening, and again, welcome to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners Meeting. This is unusual, but we'll get through it. I would like to welcome those of you in the audience, whoever, and those who are looking for this modern technology. I'd like to call the meeting-
Melvin, is there any way to stop the echo?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Chairman, if you have a-
I said, is there any way to stop the echo?
Mr. Chairman, if you-
Is there any feedback?
Mr. Chairman, if you have the TV going in the background, if you could turn that off or down, so there's no echo. That goes for any of the nine commissioners, actually. Mute your phone, too, unless you're going to speak, that would help as well.
Okay, how is it now?
Much better, thank you.
Better.
Very good. At this time, we should have the roll call, and I guess the best way of doing this is just, Madam Secretary, Madam Attorney, for them to just call their name? Would that be the best way of doing that?
Yes, sir, that'll be fine. We have all nine commissioners on the line, but if everybody just wants to confirm that they're still on the line by saying "present."
Present.
What about A, B, C, and 1, 2, 3?
I'll just call your name, and if you're still on the line, if you'll just say "present." Commissioner Coulson?
Yeah, I'm here.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Nunley?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Chairman McLawhorn?
Present.
Okay, everybody's in attendance.
Great, thank you. At this time, we should have the invocation. I thank you for this day, and for our life, health, and strength. Give us your wisdom, and lead and guide us through these challenging times. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Do we have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Madam Clerk, move it. Madam Clerk, move it. Second.
Mr. Chairman, she did not call my name.
We still have an echo on the line. Again, if there are any monitors or telephones, put them on mute, or turn any TVs off, turn the sound off, per se, turn it down.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Madam Clerk did not call my name, so I could say "present." Unless she got it up.
Thank you. How's the sound now?
That's better, for me.
Okay.
So far better.
Okay, we'll move it on. Approval of the agenda, we have that. Item for report. We have now Dr. John Silvernell, but before Dr. John Silvernell comes, let me take a moment to just give a vote of thanks to our incredible team. Our team have come together to make sure that the schoolchildren are fed. Neighbors aren't lonely, even when they have to be alone. And with God's help, we will get through this COVID-19 pandemic. Let me acknowledge our incredible team, members who are working not only daily, but hourly, to address the concerns of the citizens here in Pitt County. So, on behalf of this entire board of commissioners, let me thank Mike Emery and his staff in the Public Information Office, and also thank Dr. Silvernell and his public health staff, Randy Gentry and his emergency management staff, Florida Hardy and the human resource staff, Jan Elliott and her social service staff, and our own Scott Elliott and his Pitt County staff, which also includes Janice Gallagher and the county attorney's staff, Sheriff Paula Dance and her staff, also Pitt County Education Superintendent Dr. Ethan Linker and his staff, and all the others that contribute to the concerns of this invisible virus, which are Dr. Waldron of Viden Health and his staff, Dr. Lawrence Rouse and the Pitt Community College staff, Mayor PJ Conley and his staff. So, let's give them a round of applause for their incredible work. And again, thank you. So with that said, we'll move on now to hear from Dr. John Silvernell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as Dr. Silvernell comes up, if we can get the board to vote on the approval of the agenda, you have a motion in a second, but just need a board vote, please.
Okay.
So moved, and hugged.
Very good.
That's very well.
Yes. There's right.
Any opposition to that? I assume not. Okay. Dr. Silvernell?
Good evening, Chairman McLawhorn, other commissioners, ladies and gentlemen assembled here. Want to try to be brief, but give you some high points on where we stand with the COVID-19 response, and then I'm happy to take your questions. Some case numbers, as of today, globally, there were 354, 677 cases. That was at about 1:00 this afternoon, and came from the Johns Hopkins Global Tracker. In the U.S., we are at 35,530 cases, again, about 1:00 from the Johns Hopkins Tracker. In North Carolina, again, as of 1,100 hours today, when the state releases case counts, we were at 297 cases. In Pitt County, we are now at 6 cases. As far as we can tell, all 6 of those cases are travel-related, so I cannot confirm, but highly suspect that there's community transmission, but I don't have a case that I can point to to say that we have identified, clearly identified, community transmission. I want to mention to you and members of the television audience that case counts may vary based on timing, depending on which source that you look at, and also that cases are attributed back to the county of residence. So, when Dr. Waldron presents Viden data, you'll hear a number of cases that are at Viden. One of those is a Pitt County case, 2 of those are not Pitt County cases, so they're not included in our count, because the folks don't reside in Pitt, excuse me, in Pitt County. This afternoon, we were made aware of one Pitt County government employee who has tested positive for COVID-19. I believe this risk is low risk to other employees. She was not in an area where she would have exposed the public. She walked into the office, stated that she was not feeling well, left to go to the employee clinic. We have made other Pitt County employees aware of this by email, and also by a personal conference between myself, the county manager, and Ms. Florida Hardy. I wanted to show you this slide again, about how novel infections get detected, and we talked last time I was here about the worst cases presenting first. So, we see the deaths, we see the hospitalizations, and then we see those that are seeking medical care, and maybe we have those that are mildly ill to maybe asymptomatic. And that waterline is somewhere in that seek medical care range on this pyramid, maybe just touching the mildly ill or asymptomatic population of patients at this point. So, we're seeing more of the pyramid, but still have much to learn about this infection. And I want to stress again that for most of the infections we deal with, we've had decades, if not centuries, to study. We've had about 3 months with COVID-19. One of the preemptive actions that I took as the new health director was to recognize that the health director did not have a backup. It took several months to accomplish this, or to fix this problem, but a deputy director was selected and promoted, and I'm not sure that that's ever been clearly or openly communicated to you guys. I know there was an announcement about that. But Amy Haddam, seated here to my right in the audience, is now my deputy director. Amy brings with her 34 years of public health experience. She served as the interim health director between Dr. Morrow and myself, and I think that I and Pitt County are both very lucky to have her serving in this capacity, and she's been a big aid to me in my day-to-day functions at the health department, and especially during this response. So, thank you, Amy.
Could she put her hand up?
Wave at the camera.
I remember-
You may have remembered her from last year's budget presentation. She would have been the person-
Thank you.
-who presented the budget to you all last year. Our current actions, our public health messaging, we have continued to stress social distancing, hand hygiene, cover coughs and sneezes, rest, eat well, exercise as able. I remind you that our trails and green spaces remain open in spite of the emergency declaration that was signed earlier today. We are encouraging people to avoid sick people, if at all possible, and we're encouraging our own employees and the general community to stay home if you are sick. And again, I remind people not to smoke or vape, because that may make you more susceptible to infections. Today, we saw a shift in our public health messaging in line with the emergency declaration. I sent a letter out to our community today, and thank you, Mike Emery, for the hashtag "Go Home Stay Home." That will be our main message in our public health messaging at this time, telling folks to go home and stay home. It implores our public to do that. It also states that they may leave for essential work, to get groceries, to receive medical care, or to exercise, again, consistent with the emergency declaration. So, we want to make sure that you understand we are following that declaration in our messaging. As to myself, I've been working with internal and external partners on multiple issues. I continue to provide guidance to our local providers, and ask questions from other local leaders. We are following case counts with our communicable disease staff, or CD staff. We have a regular media schedule that we started last week, or 2 weeks ago? 2 weeks ago now. And we have shifted the time on that a little bit earlier to 11:00 in the morning, to help both our media partners, so that they can get the message to their newsrooms and out on the air, and also to allow us to still meet internal deadlines that we have to meet. And overall, I've tried to put a calm face on this for the community and our staff. Looking forward, I've directed my immunization staff to review our mass vaccination plans, so that we can be ready, if and when a vaccine becomes available, to aid in this response. I've encouraged my management team to begin collecting and recording items for our after-action report. And one of the things that we will eventually come back with, and whether that's in our next, not this year's budget, but next year's budget, is a push for molecular testing, both at the health department, and an encouragement of molecular testing in other outpatient facilities in our community. And what that means is the ability to run certain PCR polymerase chain reactions testing in the office as a point-of-service test, instead of our current immunoassay testing, which is a methodology that is probably 30 years old, if it's a day. So, it's one of the things that I would like to see going forward, both at the health department, for some of the infections we look at, and in other practices in the community, and something we may need to talk with our federal partners about. At this time, I'm happy to entertain any questions, comments, or further discussion from the commissioners.
Thank you, Dr. Silvernell. What I'll do is go down the roll and ask each commissioner for any comments, but at this time, I just want to say, Dr. Silvernell, I appreciate all that you're doing for the citizens of Pitt County. I was asked to ask this question from several community leaders. Are there any test sites under consideration, and if so, what would qualify an individual to get tested? If not, why not any test sites available?
We have tried to spread the burden of testing across the medical community, Mr. Chairman. We have done some testing at the health department in circumstances where people were unable to get tested at other sources, but with the availability of the tests at commercial labs, we have encouraged folks to see their provider, and have their provider collect the test and send it out. We have, at this point, we're aware of 121 folks in the county that have been tested. 6 have returned positive, 32 have returned negative, and 83 are pending. I know some of our partners have plans to increase access to testing through their facilities, but I can't speak for them. As we, with the expectation that there is community transmission, testing is less important in the response, but not unimportant. So, there's been a shift away from that to more of using those scarce testing resources to benefit the sickest patients. So, I hope that that answers your question.
Thank you very much. We will proceed now with Alice Albright.
No questions, thank you very much.
Tom Coulson.
None.
Amaxis Patrick.
No questions.
Ann Huggins.
No questions, but just to thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris Nunley.
Thank you, Commissioner McLawhorn, thank you, John, thank you, Dr. Silvernell. Just briefly, Dr. Silvernell, I was wondering if you could explain for the public that might be listening in, the fact that this disease is somewhat presents asymptomatic for some individuals, how does that play into the public health messaging, that it really is important for people, regardless of symptoms, that they stay home?
That's a good question, Commissioner, and thank you for that question. Personally, I think the stress that has been placed on asymptomatic transmission has been probably overplayed in the media.
Chris, you need a new TV.
We have seen at least one of the cases that we've reviewed, of one of our Pitt County residents, they presented, they were tested, and they were better in about, a total of about 3 days' time, from presentation to resolution of their symptoms in a young, healthy person. There's still some dispute as to how long they can shed virus and be infectious after that resolution, and there are some guidelines out there as to when you should consider them clear of the infection. How soon before they show symptoms they're infectious is hard to determine. My guess is that it happens sometimes, but probably not as often as has been portrayed in the national media, and that's probably the best answer I can give you, Commissioner.
Thank you, and one more question. How far do we think we are, as a county, from being able to test broadly the general public, including those that may not be presenting with symptoms, but that have maybe come into contact with individuals that have tested positive?
Yeah. Commissioner, that goes back, again, to testing capacity. The national labs, right now, are taking 6 to 7 days to return results to us, so there continues to be a significant backlog at LabCorp and Quest. The state lab is a little quicker, but again, in order to be tested at the state lab, and really to be tested at LabCorp or Quest, too, an individual is supposed to be symptomatic and have a negative flu test or other viral respiratory panel before the COVID test is obtained. So, it's a question of when that testing capacity will match demand, and that may still be a couple of weeks away, from what I've heard from national sources.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Silvernell, that'll be all.
You're welcome.
Beth Ward.
I have no questions, but thank all of you.
Okay. Lauren White.
I just want to thank you, and the rest of the health department, for all your efforts in keeping Pitt County safe and healthy.
You're welcome.
Mary Williams.
I'd like to know if there is a, Dr. Silver, thank you so much for your information on the test, and the numbers, and the statistics. I really am interested in it, and I know that my district is as well. I would like to know, do you have, do you foresee a problem with your test? It sounds like there are 2 different tests. One is if you think you may have it, and the other one is more of a general test. Is that correct?
All of the testing that is done now, there are some point-of-service tests that have been marketed, but those are poor, and the use of them has been discouraged by national sources. The testing that is done at LabCorp or Quest, or at the state lab, is what's called a real-time PCR test. So, that test looks for the genetic material of the virus in the sample, and those are highly sensitive and highly specific. So, they detect a small amount of that virus very accurately. With the testing, there are 2 parts to the test. The sample must be collected, and that's what we call a nasopharyngeal swab, and in that, a long, basically a long Q-tip is passed through one of your, one side of your nose, one of your nostrils, to the back of the nose and throat, what we call the nasopharynx. So, when you do these, you gently pass that until the patient coughs, and then you withdraw the swab and place it in the transport medium. So, that's what a collection is like. And then that sample must be refrigerated and transported to the laboratory, where they process the sample and then issue results. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Oh, yes, thank you very much. I just wanted to, I know they said it's painful, and so that right there would say, just don't go get a test unless you feel like you really need one. Is that correct?
Yeah, the other part of it, Commissioner, is that if we have enough suspicion to test an individual, then we must isolate that individual until we get results back, because if we're doing the test, we presume that they have the infection until we prove they So, anyone that we test is placed on isolation.
In home or in a specific place?
That would depend on the circumstances. If it is someone who would be well enough to stay at home, then they are isolated at home. If it was someone who was sick enough to be admitted to the hospital, then they would be placed in appropriate isolation at the hospital, or a hospital. If it was a homeless individual, we have some plans to deal with that individual that we've been working on, with our DSS folks, our Emergency Support Function 6 folks at DSS.
Thank you so much, Dr. Silver. I appreciate your patience with me.
Oh, you're very welcome, Commissioner.
Again, thank you very much, Dr. Silvernell. Scott, do you have any questions or concerns you would like to offer at this time?
I have some comments to offer, but I would like to, we have Dr. Michael Waldron in the audience from Viden, and I think he has a presentation to follow up Dr. Silvernell's, if Dr. Silvernell's finished.
Dr. Waldron.
And the camera is just there. You all can see me? Thank you and good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to talk, chairman and commissioners. Thank you for leading by example in staying home in these historic times. And this is really a story of a town like us facing a threat, looking at what they're going to do, and how they're going to respond, in these complex issues, like looking at a hurricane and wondering what to do and when. Floyd taught us a lot on how to respond to hurricanes. COVID is like a storm, and it is brewing, and it is coming, and it is going to be a Cat 5 if we do not take more definitive action right now. I believe this is supported by sound facts, science, and math, and we've watched that story play across communities in the United States and in other countries. We are behind, as a world, and the United States, and in North Carolina. The great news is, we may not be behind in Pitt County and in Greenville. There may be time to avert a Cat 5 storm here. Every community that's been facing this has eventually put more restrictions in place to control it, and when I say more restrictions, I am saying mandatory stay-at-home orders or stay-in-place orders, but they tend to put them in too late, when it doesn't work as well. Over and over, we've seen this. Are we going to be different? So, if we are going to act with more definitive action than we have so far, this is the time to do it. This is the time when it actually has an opportunity to help. We can protect our citizens more, and we can have a better economic recovery. It is easy to not act, to find reasons not to. If this is a scary time, what will the impacts of any action we have on the economy be? Maybe the warm weather will help us. Maybe it's because we live in a rural community, we will not be hit as hard. There is no data to support these suppositions. It is clear. I can tell you, this is scary, and I am scared. I'm scared for my family, for our community, our region, and our state and country. It is coming, and the economic impact is better if the impact is smaller, especially in Pitt County. We can't expect that the federal government or the state will intervene and solve our problems, or take the definitive actions that we believe needs to be taken. Viden Health has been undergoing historic preparations. We are not lulled. We've been building capacity, closed revenue-producing services, created new ways to care, put ourselves on lockdown, because we know the storm is coming, and it will be large. I want to thank Dr. Silvernell, Dr. Ramsey, the medical staff at Viden Medical Center, and all of the people that have reached out to us with support and kindness, as we soldier on to become prepared for this historic storm. Many of you, as demonstrated in this room tonight, and others have done similar things, because you know, many families have taken action in sheltering in place. And I can tell you, for over a week, my family's been sheltering in place, by the order that I gave them. Many haven't. They need to. You can see it, and they haven't. Suggesting doesn't work, especially in America. In hurricanes, we learned, we need to sound the alarm, mandate evacuations, prepare to minimize the damage. Lives and dollars are dependent on it. So, we do it before the eye is upon us. This is no different. We are in need to continue to prepare, and I want to thank you, the commissioners, and the governors, the governor, for taking definitive action today, for the work, the actions, the collaborations, the discussions that we've had as a community, to help become informed of the realities that we are facing. to help become informed of the realities that we are facing. But it's even today, the actions are not enough. We need to do more, and we need to do it now. The storm is growing. Do not let the low numbers fool you. We need to knock the wave down and flatten the curve. We need to make this a Category Three storm and not a Category Five. We need to have a stay-at-home or shelter-in-place order. Gatherings of people the size of 50 or more, of 50 will not work. People are confused by that number. We're hearing it. No, there is no certainty that stay-at-home or stay-in-place or whatever term you want to do will fix our problem. But history has taught us. We also know this from common sense. I think a lot of us have already done it. We know from our history that a town very much like Greenville and Pitt County that these actions work. And so when we hear about flattening the curve or knocking the wave down, this is the mortality rate per 100,000 of St. Louis, which is represented in this, compared to Philadelphia with the pandemic, flu pandemic, 102 years ago. With restrictive policies, including stay-in-place, they were able to attenuate the damage, and they recovered more quickly from their economy, and more of their citizens survived to live fruitful lives. We need to take definitive action like that. The question is, which town will we be? I recommend this to you, and I know how difficult this discussion can be. I want you to know that the major health systems across North Carolina continue to advocate for what I have just stated to you. We've been discussing it all day, and about two hours ago, hand-delivered a letter to the Governor to say that 50, that number needs to not be there. And it's confusing compared to other guidance, which has included people 10 or less, but we really feel that a stay-in-place order, where people are able to travel to get food and other essential services such as healthcare and their medicines, but the best thing for them is to be with their families in their homes and let this storm pass, and that they can help us preserve our future in Pitt County. I would like to suggest this bold action to show the rest of this state that we will continue to stand up for Eastern North Carolina and stand up to protect Pitt-Greenville. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Silver. Dr. Waldron, let me just ask Scott, if he would, to respond to some of the things and some of the action that hopefully that we may be taking tonight. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of respond over this past weekend, the county attorney and myself have been on, in meeting, conference calls several times with Biden on this very topic at Dr. Waldron's request, along with officials from the city of Greenville, their manager and their mayor, as well as other people, I think, from Biden, and discussed this in detail as to a possible stay-in-place order or action individually as a county and city versus an order statewide that would come from the Governor, and kind of went back and forth as to the social implications, healthcare implications, economic implications. And one thing that we did come out of it with, which Dr. Waldron recognized, was some of the incremental approaches that we took this morning by expanding our state of emergency. And this was done even prior to the Governor, who then did it later in the afternoon, where we actually called for the prohibition of the operating of certain types of businesses in the jurisdiction of the county, and that being owners and operators of fitness clubs, studios, and gyms, salons, barber shops, tanning salons, spas, and professional grooming, as well as massage and tattoo parlors are prohibited from operating. But then there's a list from A to Z of everything that can operate. Healthcare, grocery stores, farming, food cultivation, newspapers, gas stations, hardware stores, plumbers. It goes on and on and on and on. At the moment, we, I guess from the staff level, we felt like the incremental, at least doing something initially until we got to you tonight to see if there was any desire to do anything beyond this. We did this through the powers of the Chairman of the Board, through the state of emergency, and then we told Dr. Waldron that, or I guess my communication back to Dr. Waldron in the hospital was, come tonight, they're doing the same thing with the Greenville City Council, presenting the case, you know, whether it's based upon data or a model or whatever it may be, that this would be his opportunity to come before you to see what action that you may prefer to take or additional action you may prefer to take. So that's kind of where we are right now. We would prefer the Governor to, and I know Dr. Waldron has been in communication with the Governor's office constantly, we would prefer that this action would be statewide, but at this point in time, we don't believe the Governor is leaning towards that at this point in time. That could change. I might defer to the county attorney if she has any additional comments, or if not, that's fine, too.
No additional comments other than to clarify that this board does have the authority to implement greater restrictions if the board so chooses to do so, whether that be your choices are to stay where you are with the level of incremental restrictions, go a little bit further than the state order today, or go all the way to carry out the "go home, stay home" tagline that Dr. Silvernail had referenced.
And another point, in terms of the county's jurisdiction, if you were to say, yes, tonight, we want to do a stay-at-home order, and we're going to implement this tomorrow, you need to keep in mind, your jurisdiction does not include the incorporated areas of the 10 municipalities. Each of them would have to take their individual action as well, which I think is why Dr. Waldron had the city of Greenville being the largest municipality, representing the largest land area per capita population with the county in this discussion. But, so it would take, it would take actually 11 different entities to do this countywide in Pitt County.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I think Dr. Waldron had additional data to present.
Mr. Chairman, I think, based on the amount of traffic that's on these highways and people are out and there are more than one in a car, and I think we should do this institute, this, I don't know how we're going to enforce it, but I think we should institute the shelter in place and stay at home. And I think we should include, in this motion, also include the list that County Manager Scott Elliott has read out in the newspaper and the order in the newspaper, and that is publicized widely.
I think the proclamation that Chairman McLonghorn issued earlier is sufficient for right now. If it's not a statewide effort, then I think it's kind of pointless for Pitt County to do it. I feel like what Chairman McLonghorn did earlier is sufficient. We've closed down certain businesses, and we've left essential businesses, we're letting essential businesses keep working, and I think that's what we need to do for right now.
Ann Huggins, I just don't know how we would enforce it. That would be my question.
Well, the enforcement, we have deputies running around, the state police is running around. They can at least say disperse. I have been to the grocery store, and I have seen that happening. It's better to have foresight than hindsight. Our numbers are low now, but we need to take aggressive action. And I know that you may not think that it's necessary, Commissioner White, but we need to protect our citizens as best that we can. And sometimes you just can't wait for the Governor to make a decision. He didn't even do anything until this resolution was contacted him, if I understood our County Manager correct, and with Dr. Silvernail.
Chairman McLonghorn, Commissioner Nunley.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question for Dr. Waldron, if he could. Dr. Waldron, thank you for coming tonight to speak. Briefly, a stay-in-place order as you would have our community and other communities put in place, would an order of that type restrict necessary activities of industries that we deem necessary to continue receiving food, groceries, drugs, healthcare, those types of necessary industries? And if it would not, what, in your view, are the areas in our community that would need to remain open as necessary?
I appreciate the comments and questions. And, no, the list, and Scott could go through the list. It's what we are terming, and it's usually termed as essential services. And so they include grocery stores, healthcare, pharmacy, agriculture's on the list. So you have food production, veterinary services. It's a fairly long list of services that are felt to be essential. And I will say that a lot of the things that you did today boldly and is very appreciated gets to many of the non-essential services. So when gyms and salons and things like that, that gets a lot of the, what we consider, non-essential. It's not total. And I think that the very, the larger issue that the healthcare community across the state and here in Greenville suggests is that the guidance of no more, that having groups less than 50, it sends a very wrong message to our citizens. And 50 is a lot for this virus and will promote transmission and spread. And I was going to just make sure, especially with Pitt County and our special and great relationship, to understand what these curves mean. And we talk about it, and Dr. Silvernail and I were talking because we've looked at different models and what Viden Medical Center is preparing for, and we've modeled this out. And if you can see this, the projected census of COVID-19 patients at Viden Medical Center, if we do not take more definitive action, in 50 days, we are projecting a census that means 600 people a day more than we currently have. And I think Dr. Silvernail had a number that was around that or maybe a little bit more. But, you know, these models are not perfect, but it shows you the kind of event that we are planning for and the economic cost, and frankly, the burden that it puts on our healthcare community. And so we think these essential services and getting stay-in-place would help us with that issue.
Thank you, and I'll just address this to the board and Dr. Waldron, and maybe you can comment on this as well. But it seems to me that the reason why we see incremental approaches being taken and then further incremental approaches being taken by communities is that it reflects the reality that in every single community that this virus presents, and this is across the world now, is that the numbers are the same. The curve is not, does not lie without really, really intensive measures, whether it's through screening, intensive screening, much like, I guess, in South Korea and Singapore or really, really lockdowns, I guess it's shelter-in-place type of situation. Communities have not been able to slow the spread. And so what, I guess, if we're hearing from our healthcare professionals and the major healthcare provider in our region that's going to see the influx, and really, we in Pitt County, because we're the center with Viden of healthcare in the East, and we're going to have to provide services to this flood, and they're saying that the flood's coming, I think we as a commission need to, need to take Dr. Waldron's words seriously. And we need to take the most proactive approach because we don't get to rewind time on this. If Viden is flooded, people will lose their lives that don't need to. I'd much rather sound like an alarmist by taking an action now that people look back just like in St. Louis in 1918, that they were going over the top. And I'd much rather save the lives by taking a shelter-in-place. If a lot of folks are already doing it, and if we can, as a county, lead, even though it's, you know, in a lot of ways, it's just persuasive because we don't have a lot of jurisdiction, I feel like it does set, it sets the tone for what a major healthcare provider in our region is requesting. And I think we need to seriously consider taking Dr. Waldron's and Viden Medical System's advice on this.
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to add one thing to that. I would like, I do know that churches are remaining open. And that is a problem. I didn't make that suggestion lightly. I like to save lives and keep us safe. Somebody's TV is up. But I'd like to say that churches are opening. There has already been gathering more than 10. The churches need to work out another method for having their congregation to address them. We don't need to wait and say, well, we should have. We should be proactive in this. Lives are at stake. Our community is at stake, and we need to take a firm look at this. And waiting is not going to help the situation, Commissioner White. We need to take a proactive stand on this. And I'm supporting what Dr. Silvernail and Dr. Waldron has suggested. And the rest of the county, we are the leaders here, and we need to take the lead at some point. This is serious.
Mr. Chairman.
If we need a motion, I'm ready to make it.
Not everybody has had a chance to talk.
Not yet, not yet. Commissioner Ward?
Yes. I wanted to say that I support exactly what Chris said. I think that it's, and certainly, you know, based on the information we've gotten, some of us have been in this and talking for the past week. Let's get ahead of this. There's not a lot, and the other thing that bothers me, if we don't go on and get this started, if I understand this correctly, the towns then will have to meet and decide to follow suit in the county. Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Well, I feel like that makes it even more imperative for us to move on this tonight. So I would be in support of it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. It's Tom Coulson.
Yes, sir. Ms. Coulson.
Okay, it's actually for Dr. Waldron. Dr. Waldron, how long are you saying or suggesting that this stay-in-place would be? And how, I mean, how extensive would it be? Would manufacturing companies shut down? Are we going to kill the economy?
Well, as I stated, I appreciate the question, and I believe that the economy will be better with definitive action, as I'm suggesting, rather than worse in the long term. And I-
Give me a time, though. You haven't answered my question. How long are you suggesting that would continue?
Yeah, there were a couple of questions, so that was one. The other one was, how long? And I think it's important to understand that this is moving extremely rapidly, and every two days, the case number doubles. And so I, I would suggest that two weeks is the minimum. But two weeks in this virus lifetime, we, we may not recognize ourselves in two weeks. So I would ask that a minimum be two weeks and that we reconsider at that time. And Scott, um, has a list, because the, I think the important thing is, is, um, you know, we have pharmaceutical manufacturers and other things that are very important. And, um, it, those are not impacted by, uh, the stay, um, order.
I understand that. But manufacturing, making things that say that are considered to be non-essentials, still provide jobs to where people make money so they can buy groceries and pay for the pharmaceuticals that they need. And God forbid, if they have to go to the hospital, pay you, the hospital, for the services rendered. I mean, we, do we, we, we wanna be careful not to make the cure worse than the disease. And, and I think you've answered that, two weeks minimum, then reassess it.
And if I can elaborate on Dr. Waldrum's comment, in the proclamation that was passed today, or actually signed by the chairman today, um, there's twenty-one items that are listed in there that are allowed to continue. And in this eight states that so far have, have put a, um, a stay home, go home, or a shelter in place order, these twenty-one things are allowed. And if, if I can indulge the board just real quickly, I'm not gonna read everything in every single category, but I'm just gonna elaborate more than I did a few minutes ago. First one is obviously healthcare operations and the, the essential infrastructure. Second one is grocery stores, farmers' markets, produce stands, and related. Third one is food cultivation, including farming, livestock, and fishing. Next is businesses that provide food, shelter, and social services and other necessities of life for the economically disadvantaged or otherwise needy individuals. Next is newspapers, television, radio, other media services. Number six is gas stations, auto supply, auto repair, related facilities. Number seven is banks and related financial institutions. Again, these are all allowed to continue. Eight is hardware stores. Nine is plumbers, electricians, exterminators, and the like. Ten is business providing mailing and shipping services, including post office boxes. Eleven is educational institutions, basically doing distance, um, learning. Um, twelve, laundry master dry cleaners, laundry service providers. Thirteen, restaurants and other facilities that prepare food and serve food, but only for carryout. Next is businesses that supply products for people to work from home, office supply, i.e. Next is businesses that supply other essential businesses with this, with the support or supplies necessary to operate. Next is business that ship or deliver groceries, food, goods, or services directly to residences. Next is airlines, taxis, and other private transportation providers and the like. Next is home-based care for seniors, adults, and children. Next is residential facilities, including hotels, motels, shared rental units, shelters for seniors, adults, and children. Next category is professional services such as legal or accounting services. Next, um, is childcare facilities, providing services that enable employees exempted from the provisions of this, of the, this proclamation, or what we're talking about here. And then there's, there are, um, sub, subcategories of that for childcare, it, to be in groups of fifty or less, and then other, um, that's, that's your twenty-one basic categories of activities that would, that would continue, even in, in what the, um, chairman signed today, or if you went to a stay in place, um, type operation.
I have, I mean, one more comment, and I guess that's still a question I've been listening. I mean, my comment is, I mean, I appreciate Dr. Waldrum, um, presentation, but the governor has a task force with economic and public health experts, along with national resources. And teamwork is key, and I don't feel like now is the time to undermine our state and federal partners.
Who's speaking?
Lauren White.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I also wanna thank, um, Dr. Waldrum for his presentation. Uh, but may I ask if, uh, Dr. Silver, ma- mayor, mayor, also agrees with this, uh, uh, with this idea or model or? I, I don't, I don't believe I heard that in his presentation. Did, or did I?
Well, we can ask him.
He's at the podium.
I'm at the podium. Um, let me tell you, from a personal standpoint, um, I kept my wife and son home from a Boy Scout function this weekend, uh, to help protect me because I have a chronic lung disease related to my World Trade Center, uh, exposure in, in two thousand and one. Um, so I'm practicing what I'm preaching. I go, I go home, I go to work. I've been to the market once or twice, uh, in the past two weeks here, uh, for brief stops. When I've tried to, to calculate some casualty rates for this, again, depending on the assumptions you make, those vary wildly. Uh, and those were just for Pitt County, not across eastern North Carolina. So I'm responsible for Pitt County. Dr. Waldrum's responsible for his whole system, which is twenty-nine counties worth of, of eastern North Carolina. Uh, but in Pitt County, those, those casualty projections range anywhere from a couple of hundred critically ill folks to several hundred critically ill folks, uh, which would overwhelm any hospital. Can I guarantee that a stay in place order would, would stop that? No, but it would go perhaps a little bit further than what was done in the emergency proclamation, uh, this morning, as, as I too have witnessed folks out there. I know my church has been shut down, uh, for a couple of weeks now, uh, but apparently other, other houses of worship are, are open and, and operating. So there's something to be, to be thought of there. It's, it's a hard decision. Um, it, it's a, uh, it's a devilish foe that, that we are wrestling with. And, and again, with three months of, of experience with this disease, it's hard to make reliable predictions as to, as to outcome. I'm not sure if that answers your question or not, but I, I'm already practicing that sort of stay at home thing myself.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Dr. Silvernail. Uh, let me, let me go down to this. Ellis Albright, uh, any comments from you?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm very much in favor of the two-week, uh, stay at home, um, and revisiting that in a couple of weeks. I also wonder if we have started, uh, looking into, uh, alternative spaces, uh, in the event that this gets out of control and our hospital space is overwhelmed, what are we gonna do with the people that we don't have room for at Vident?
Do you want me to? Um, I, I appreciate, uh, the question. It's very important. And I will just, I really appreciate your answer. And I advise anyone that ever seeks medical care from a physician, uh, after they give you a long-winded set of recommendations, ask them what they would do if it was them or their family, and you'll get the honest, pointed truth. And you've heard two of us say that, so I appreciate your comments. Um, we have literally thousands of people that have been working a number of months to essentially create capacity to handle the surge. And so we have modeled this out and have new processes of care, um, and new capabilities that literally, I tell, um, our, our organization, which I'm so proud of what they're doing, um, that we are literally trying to create a new eight-hundred-bed hospital in Greenville, North Carolina in two or three weeks. So every day helps us create more of that capacity. And every little bit that we can knock that wave down helps protect our citizens. We are fighting a very tricky bug. And, um, we know from what's happened in the world that complacency is not the answer. And so literally, I have teams, including myself, that are working literally around the clock to create that capacity. Um, the nation has shortages, um, in many of the essential items. Um, we are fortunate in many respects to build that capacity. Some of the testing issues, um, that were discussed earlier, um, it, it gets very complicated, but we have some highly sophisticated testing capability that we've recently brought online that helps us manage the inpatients more proactively. Um, we have space and beds and all of that, um, mapped out and being set up. Um, and it all depends on how big that wave is. Uh, we feel that the, the most significant issue that every healthcare organization in the country will face are issues with protecting our professionals with what are called PPEs, professional protection equipment, um, and, um, other types of supplies like that. But really, the limiting factor will be, uh, potentially human. And that's why you may have picked up in my comments that it is especially important for us to take very definitive action in a town like Greenville, when we have so many healthcare workers that we are going to need to be able to come to work. And if this spreads through our community, they will not be able to come to work. And so it's an especially, um, a difficult situation, and is one of the, uh, reasons that we feel being very proactive and definitive for our community here is so important today.
Hey, thank you. And, and let's hope we can keep it at category three. Thank you very much for that preparation and the answer.
Okay, very good. Uh, Max Sishtach.
Thank everyone for the presentations. Um, I, I would agree, I think something needs to be done to kind of curtail the, uh, spreading of everything. Um, I, I think we need to take a long, hard look at what can be done to prevent any of this from spreading.
Thank you. Uh, I think Chris has spoken, Beth has spoken, Ann has spoken, Lauren has spoken, uh, Mary Perkins-Williams has spoken. Um, let me, let me just ask this question. The, the, uh, what we have proposed, um, uh, by Scott, uh, myself, and, and signing the proclamation, how, how different would that be? Because it seems as if we are taking some pro- you know, being proactive, we're taking some action. And, 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 and Dr. Waldrum, uh, how, how different would that be comparing to what you're saying?
If, if I can kinda jump in, let Dr. Waldrum as well. The action, if, if the board were to take action on this tonight, they would basically be, there'd be a motion to Director Hughes, the chairman, to amend the proclamation that was passed today to require a, what we're gonna call the hashtag go home, stay home, except for essentials in unincorporated Pitt County, would be the action. Then you, as chairman, would then amend the proclamation to require this.
Excuse me, and would that be for two weeks?
Yes, as you had discussed.
And, and then we will revisit it. Okay, thank you.
And it doesn't include Greenville, right?
It does not include any municipalities, all ten municipalities, Greenville included, would have to take their, their separate action on this.
And that's why I think it's so important that we do something and act, because it's going to take them time to get their group together. And it's coming down the pike, it's not slowing down.
I think Dr. Silvernail wanted to follow up with a comment.
Thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Manager. The comment that I wanted to make to the, to the commissioners is the, the two-week ask that was put in the executive order and the two-week ask that would go with any further action is to match the incubation cycle of the disease. The incubation cycle is two to fourteen days. So we need to start thinking about this, and how many incubation cycles do we need to give, get through or live through to get to the other side of this epidemic? And I wish I had an answer to that. Um, but that's, that's the, that's the reasoning or the thought process behind the two-week evaluation, that this can be reissued every two weeks, uh, for as long as needed to help, uh, keep folks apart and decrease the spread of, of the illness based on the incubation cycle of the disease.
Another question that's been posed is, does, does the board of commissioners want to adjust the, in what we, what the chairman signed today in the proclamation requires, um, no more than fifty or more, do the board want to take a lower number than that or keep that number?
I think the number was high. I'd rather see it lower.
I'd rather see it around ten or less.
I, I agree, it needs to be lower. This is Commissioner Nunley.
Albright says ten or less. It's Tom.
Just, just, um-
I like-
The, um, the president has suggested ten as the number, and, um, and I believe the CDC has also said that, um, any groups larger than ten should be discouraged. I believe that's, that's correct.
I'd like to see that included.
Um, I support taking the action with the ten days and revisit the ten days. I want us to do something.
Two, two weeks, correct? Commissioner Perkins-Williams? Thank you.
Okay, can I ask a question of, uh, the Health Director? Was he saying that we need to include in our motion that at the end of those two weeks, if we can just re-up the next two weeks without calling a meeting and doing that sort of thing? I think that's based on what they would advise us.
Yeah, Janice is gonna answer that.
Yeah, so your, um, your emergency ordinance now vests the authority with your chairman, um, to, uh, extend that proclamation if necessary. So you would not need a formal meeting unless the chairman-
Okay, so that would be done without us having to meet again, based on what the, uh, Dr. Silvernail and Dr. Waldrum would tell us?
Yes, that authority is vested with the chairman.
Okay.
This is Tom Coulson, I got a statement. I'd never heard a definitive answer to Melvin's question. Basically, what's the difference between what he signed, maybe the fifty people, and what Dr. Waldrum is, 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 uh, suggesting?
I think it's the, the messaging of, um, when you're messaging, right now, there, there's no definitive messaging asking, requiring people to stay home, even though there's these twenty-one exceptions with even all the subcategories. I think it's, the, the, the message is different. There will still be those providing essential services or complying with those twenty-one categories of activity, will, you'll still have some activity level in the, in the jurisdictions, but it would be reduced, because people would be hearing a message of a requirement to go home, stay home, rather than right now, it's more of a voluntary, we, we're asking, we're recommending compared to it's required. Somebody asked the question on, on enforcement, um, of a county of almost two hundred thousand population, um, it's probably not something that you could, I mean, law enforcement would, would be run ragged trying to chase every car and every individual, going into store, making sure it was essential or that their purchase is essential. But they could disperse groups of ten or more and follow up on, in individual cases where it seemed warranted.
And if I could further clarify, what you have now is you are incrementally affecting particular businesses. So you have not in- indicated a mandate towards individuals not to go out. As you currently stand, anybody can go anywhere they wanna go at any time, but you're reducing the number of places they can go by incrementally closing down different businesses. In this order, the difference from what this morning's proclamation is that there's the affirmative statement that people are to stay home unless they are seeking these essential services, which is a broad array of services that Scott listed. But this proclamation would impact and encourage and require people to stay home, rather than simply giving people less places to go.
So I, I have a question. Who's going to feed these people that have no savings, that live paycheck to paycheck? I mean, I'm not being, I'm trying to be negative here, I'm just asking this question. I mean, if, if they don't earn my, can't go to a business, and I, be, the businesses will, will take measures, I would think, to try to keep them safe and allow them to, to work and make, uh, uh, money, it won't take long and you're gonna shut down everything. You, we, we'll cause a depression, not a, not a recession, we'll have a depression.
I second what Tom just said.
If, Chairman McGlockhorn, if I could jump in. This is Commissioner Nunley.
Okay, yes, sir.
Um, I, I, you know, I think that the, the hard part about this, and I think there's a hope of everyone that, that somehow that it will not be a huge economic hit on our neighbors, on our own families. But the reality is, and this is something, I mean, we, we have the benefit of hindsight, we have the benefit of looking at what other communities have done or what they haven't done. There is going to be economic impact that's unprecedented for our generation, regardless if we act now or if we don't. Um, if we don't act, what's gonna happen is that our, that our healthcare system is overwhelmed. Um, we're not gonna be able to flatten the curve, and because hindsight doesn't help us. And so, yes, it will, already, economic impacts are dramatic. Um, it's gonna be dramatic for me, it's gonna be dramatic for many of our families. But not acting will make it worse and for longer. And so we need to lead, and, and I think it, it's, I'll echo- And so we need to lead, and, and I think it, it's, I'll echo Scott's sentiment, this is about messaging at this point. People that know what they're doing are already staying home. This is about our government stepping up and, and, you know, putting, you know, putting, putting forward before our population exactly what, what we're already doing because it's the best and safest thing for our community and it's what is going to get us back on our feet sooner rather than later.
Chris, would you put that in the form of a motion that we move forward with this? I'll second it.
Commissioner McLawhorn, if it's appropriate, I'll, I'll make a motion that, that, that the proclamation be amended to, um, that the county, that the county, um, put, put forward and advise, um, the residents upon which we have jurisdiction to shelter in place and stay at home, um, except for, um, the necessary services outlined in that order. Um, and that furthermore, that, that the chair be vested with authority to revisit that in, in two weeks' time.
Uh, when would this, when would this become effective?
That would be the next, um, yeah, we're saying Wednesday, 5:00 PM. I wanted to make a, Mr. Chairman, if I can also make a comment, we're on a conference call with the Speaker of the House at 5 o'clock today. Other commissioners may have been on the conference call too, is by the Association of County Commissioners, four county commissioners. And the speaker said that if they convene the General Assembly, one of the things they're going to look at is the unemployment compensation provisions that are currently in place. Right now, you have to wait six weeks. The speaker was mentioning that there's, there's talks in Raleigh, again, this is just talks about having it reduced down to one week. And, and beyond that, also that they might temporarily expand it for such services as barbers, hair salons, those types that are not, I guess normally would be eligible for unemployment. That's just a, that's a comment he made, it's not necessarily a done deal, but something that he was committed to pursuing in the General Assembly.
Now, you, you said that the recommendation that Chris Nunley just made, this would be effective as of Wednesday of this week?
Wednesday, the 25th at 5:00 PM. And we needed to clarify the second on the motion.
It was me, Beth Ward.
Thank you.
And that Wednesday, I grant it's a suggestion you can make that whenever.
Yeah, that's just our suggestion, you can make it for whenever you want it.
Yes, I'll, I'll, and I'll further move that, um, that 10, that, that gatherings of no more than 10 be allowed in the, in the county.
I approve that as the second.
Okay. All in favor of the said motion, let it be known by stating your name, starting. If you would, Madam Secretary, would you go around and ask, uh, the names of how many, who's who affirmed that?
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
You're in support of the motion?
Yes, in support of the motion.
Commissioner Ward?
In support of the motion.
Chairman McLawhorn?
Support it.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes, in support.
Commissioner Coulson?
In support.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Support.
Commissioner White?
Hi.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
So the motion passes eight to one.
Thank you very much.
Um, may I ask, may I either, I don't know whether this is a question or a statement. I know it's not affecting the motion, but I'm not trying, um, enforcement is, if, if they, if someone comes up on a group or whatever, they can just ask them to disperse. I'm not saying put anybody in jail or any of that, that creates another problem. I'm saying that law enforcement has the privilege of saying, listen, we have an ordinance in place or whatever this is, that we, uh, stay at home and shelter at home, and we ask that you disperse.
My opinion is that enforcement is impossible, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't do this. The fact is, is that we're sending the, a message that it's serious.
Right.
And I also agree because it's like anything else, people are going to make their decisions, but I agree with what Mary said and I don't think anybody has an intent, you know, of arresting anyone, but certainly encouraging them to, you know, go home.
Very good. Thank you very much, thank all of you for, for, for those votes. Uh, Scott, you have anything further you want to say on this?
No, Mr. Chairman, other than, I mean, as you can imagine, staff have been very busy in terms of, um, um, all the numerous people and departments you, you mentioned, as well as the other departments that have supported us along, along with the ones you didn't mention. There's been a, a long list of, of actions we've taken. I don't think it's really necessary at this point for me to go through it, but just for the board to know that we have been, um, been on this and, and trying to work with our partners as well as the, the departments that are directly involved within our organization. And thank you for your attention and action on this.
Well, I must echo what you said, Scott. We have had incredible support from all of our team members, the county, uh, the city staff, the hospital, and, uh, uh, the decision that we make is not easy, uh, but we wanted to make the decision that was benefiting, uh, this entire community. So, uh, thank you for your, your, your vote and, uh, uh, we'll move forward. So now at this time, we will have, uh, Brian Barnett with the, not in the financial report to come forth, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I believe you have in front of you the monthly financial report as statutory required. Um, I do want to point out real quick that this report goes us to the end of February, uh, the 29th is our eighth month, so this, uh, the information here does not reflect any, um, thing that may have financially happened involving with COVID-19. So at the end of February, we're two-thirds of our fiscal year. On the general fund, we have collected 73.6% of our anticipated revenues and we have spent 65.8% of our expenses. Uh, on the solid waste fund, we've collected 77.74% and we have spent 61.32% of our, um, expenses for the year in the solid waste enterprise fund. Um, if there's any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer.
I move approving, Mr. Chairman, if it's in the order.
Okay.
Barnett?
Has been moving properly second. All in favor, state yes or no.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Yes, okay. Get to answer, thank you very much, Brian. Uh, manager reports, Scott.
I think we have, um, before that, the February 2020 tax collections report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, tax collector, help, Sam Poon, I'm sorry.
Chairman McLawhorn, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, it's good to be with y'all tonight. Tonight I'm bringing you an item for report, the February 2020 tax collection report. Uh, Pitt County fiscal year to date, um, July 1, 2019 through February 29, 2020, the combined collection rate is 96.59%. Uh, this time last year was 97.58%. It is my recommendation that you approve the February 2020 tax collection report as presented.
So moved.
So moved.
And Huggins.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
Has been moving properly second, that we approve. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs, ahs, thank you. Now, uh, we move down to you, Scott.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On my report, we have the next two scheduled meeting dates of April 6 at 9:00 AM and May 4 at 9:00 AM. We will, um, work with the board and determine whether there'll be a meeting like we're holding now or what that will be, but right now those are the two meetings that are on the books. The other item is a, um, I wouldn't call it a good news item, I'd call it a great news item in terms of our All-American County finalist designation. Back in the fall, back in October, we submitted a letter to the National Civic League stating our intent for Pitt County to submit an application to the American Civic League to be considered as an All-American County. The public may be more remembering the All-American City designation. When you drive through different municipalities, you might see on a water tower the shield that says All-American City. The National Civic League has, is allowing counties to submit applications to be considered and Pitt County submitted an application and we've been, um, reduced to one of 20 finalists across the, the nation. And the, the intent of the, the application that we submitted was to be focused on celebrating examples of civic engagement practices that enhance health and well-being in local communities. Says they're looking for community-driven projects that demonstrate inclusive decision-making processes to enhance health and well-being for all. So we've got a very, very good application we submitted with three focus areas, which we will, um, bring back to you with further detail at another meeting, but wanted to let you know that we've been selected. There is a, um, presentation that would be, occur in June of this year in Denver, Colorado, assuming travel is permitted and things are back to normal, then, or possibly they may go a different route for, um, the presentation. Normally you take a delegation of people from each of your jurisdiction and you go and actually make your pitch before the National Civic League as well as before the 19 other finalists who are there. And then the top 10 of that would then be, be designated as final, well, not finalists, but actually winners across the nation. And it would be our hope and intent and desire to be a top 10 and to be able to have the shield as an All-American County in 2020. So in light of all the talk of the COVID-19, this is kind of a, a shining star as we move amongst this, this, um, situation that we can report this and, um, we will report back to you further information.
Scott, is this our first, uh, All-American County? I, I think they did have, uh, All-American City, uh, award sometime back, am I correct?
I believe in the, in the past Greenville may have, have received the, um, All-American City. I don't have that in, in front of me exactly, but, um, yeah, this would be the counties. Traditionally, cities are the ones who have applied for this crest, but the National Civic League has opened this up to counties now and we're proud that we were able to submit. We had a, a great team on there made up of, um, officials from public health, planning, um, the Vidant, Vidant Health Foundation, um, just a, legal may have been involved, but a, a, a good team of individuals that wrote the application and came up with our, our three projects. So we're just happy to report this.
Very good, good news. Thank you. Uh, items for consent.
I move for, and some items for consent, Beth Ward.
Second.
Second, Mr. Williams.
Has been moving properly second. All those in favor, let it be known.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs, ahs, thank you very much. Items for discussion, Florida Hardy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Evening.
We sent to you two policies and a work agreement, uh, for the employees. We sent the first policy last week, guidelines for employee leave usage. I think by the time we sent it to you, we got the law that came down, um, late Thursday. So we, uh, worked through that on Friday. So we've been working with the legal staff and the county management team to try to come up with some policies to make sure we're compliant with the law that was put in place last, uh, last week. Um, I'll tell the, just for the public, I'll say the purpose, on March 18th, the President signed into law the Families First Coronavirus Act, uh, and the act applies to employers with 500 or less employees or governmental agencies. So we're a governmental agency, although we have 500 or more employees, we're, um, we have to comply with the act. Um, it was effective on March 18th and it would expire on December 31st, 2020. So there is an end to the policy that they put in place. What it does provide for is mandatory paid leave for certain COVID-19 related absences for employees, uh, in the government agencies. Um, and so we've tried to establish a policy to make sure we meet all the requirements of the act. Um, so basically, full-time employees will be entitled to 80 hours of this, um, leave time and our part-time employees, it will be prorated. So, um, and then the reasons for the, um, leave that they can use, they listed six reasons that employees could use this time under six circumstances. One, the employee is subject to a federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation order related to COVID-19. Employee, employee has been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine because of COVID-19. The employee is experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 or, and are seeking a medical diagnosis. Or the employee is caring for an individual subject to a federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation order or has been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine. Or number five, the employee is caring for a son or daughter of such employee, if the school or place of care of the son or daughter has been closed or whose childcare provider of such son or daughter is unavailable due to COVID-19 precautions. And then number six was the employee's experienced any other substantially similar conditions as specified by the Secretary of Health and Human Services. So those are the six reasons that an employee would be allowed to take that 80 hours or in case of part-time employees, whatever that prorated amount is. So that's basically the policy as relates to the act. What we're asking for in addition to that is, um, the act expires on December 30th, 31st, 2020, and at that time, any time used would typically expire under the act. What we're asking for is an extension of that timeframe from December 31st and give us one year for those employees who may not get the opportunity to use that time between now and December 31st, 2020. We have a large number of employees who have to be here no matter what, public safety employees, um, DSS staff, 911 staff, emergency management staff, and some of the other staff members, financial services, who would be here making sure everybody's still getting paid. So that would be one of the things we're requesting, thus in addition to the act that, um, makes some requirements. We also put some things in place so we can kind of control the time when it's being used. It would never be paid out to employees, so if they don't use it, it is never paid out. It would not be converted to any other type of leave time, so it's kind of a use it or lose it type scenario. So that's the first policy that we're asking, um, for your approval on, on this section to allow us to extend it. It would never be paid out to employee if they separate from county service. So that is the first policy that we would like, um, your approval on the ability to extend that act for one year for those employees who would not be able to use that time.
And that extension for one year, if, if they were fortunate not to have to use it for a COVID-19 reason that Florida outlined, and then the following year they would then have 80 hours of time they could use for any other reason, could be pers, personal, um, leave, vacation, um, whatever, if they're fortunate enough not to have to use it initially.
Question?
Yes.
I have a question.
Ask, ask Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Um, my question is, has this policy been sent out to all, all of the, the employees?
It has been sent out to department heads for their review.
Yeah, we did.
It's been sent out?
It's set up as a draft, that, with the understanding that this is a draft.
Okay, it's set up as a draft and it went to the...
Only to the department heads.
To the department heads.
We did not, we don't, we don't normally vet, draft policies with the entire workforce, just the department heads.
Okay, good. Now, the, the next question is, was there any objections by any department here?
No.
No, absolutely none.
No.
I mean, this is, this is a, a good thing.
And, because they are the ones who's going to be monitoring, am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Along with you, Florida, but, you know.
Yes.
I, I, I like the offer of motion that we approve it.
I second that motion.
Has been moving properly second. Uh, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs, thank you very much. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. And then the last policy we sent you, or actually was the first one we sent you, uh, is guidelines for employee leave usage. What we were asking for in this policy is, um, basically to give us, uh, or give the manager the authority to, I'll say relax or modify the requirements of leave usage as outlined in our Pitt County personal ordinance. Long and short, um, today, if an employee, um, is sick, they're required to use sick. Um, they would be, they would not be able to use sick to take care of their minor children. So relaxing this policy would allow the employee to use sick time if they had to, to go home and take care of their children with school being out or daycare's closing or the loss of their babysitter, um, or whatever, that they could use sick time or personal time or whatever leave time they have available. We may have new employees who may not have much leave time, so this would allow them the opportunity to use whatever they do have. It also, um, would allow the manager to approve advancing of leave time for up to 12 months for those employees who maybe don't have enough leave time on the books so that they can go home and either take care of themselves or their family members, uh, through this particular situation. The other piece that we're asking for, uh, that's in the personal ordinance is a slight change to the voluntary share leave program. Today, an employee... Today, an employee can donate personal leave time to another employee for that employee's illness. So, we're asking now that they be allowed to donate sick time to another employee if they so desire to help that employee through this time period.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. This is Commissioner Huggins.
Yes. Did she finish? Has she finished?
Couple more pieces, and then, I'll be done. And then, the telework section of it is where we're setting up a policy to allow employees that can, who maybe have to be home to take care of children, or maybe they're being quarantined but not yet sick, that possibly do some work from home. And with that, we also sent you a copy of the agreement, a draft agreement that they would sign if they're going to do telework. So, that would allow them to work at home, especially if they don't have leave time, and still be on payroll. And the department here would be responsible for tracking those hours that they're working. And the agreement outlines the dos and don'ts and what they can do with that policy. Last piece is our health insurance. Currently, our policy is that if an employee is on payroll at least half the month, they're covered health insurance for that month. What we're asking for is if that employee, for some reason, is off payroll for the entire month, that the county continue to cover their health insurance to get them through this time period. Because this is a time when they would need health insurance if someone is out because they are sick. And that was the last pieces of that policy. We spent a lot of time, you know, with county legal staff, with the management team, going round and round on this policy and try to come up with something that we thought was reasonable and what could we change in the Personal Ordinance. And these are temporary ordinance changes. It's not a complete change. And when this is over, we go back to the policies as usual.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve, second.
I second.
Moving properly, second. Favor, let it be known by saying.
Aye.
Motion carries. Those opposed, I'm sorry, nay. I hear none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Thank you.
And we move on to items for decision, Scott, if you would.
Mr. Chairman, you have appointments and reappointments to the Fire District Commission. This is on page 40 of the agenda package. And on this item, you basically have individuals who have been recommended by the fire departments to serve on the Fire District Commission for the county. And as I recall, this is the three-person Fire District Commission for each of the 20 volunteer fire departments. You have a list of all of the names in the agenda package. And again, these are being recommended by the individual fire departments.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve this motion.
Second.
Has been moving properly. Let it be known by saying aye, nay?
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. Reappointment to the Local Fireman Relief Fund, Scott.
Yes, on these reappointments, you have individuals needing to be reappointed for a two-year term to this Local Fireman's Relief Fund Board. And you have two people being recommended, Glenn Lofton and Robert Humbles III, for a two-year term.
I move we accept the, our recommendation.
And I second it.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Ayes have it, thank you. At this time, we're going to move into Commissioner's comment. But let me just say that I appreciate all of you, the Commissioners, for this thoughtful consideration in terms of moving on this proclamation. I know it was difficult. I know, I know for some it was very, very difficult. But I think that if you look at the overall aspect of what we did, we did it for the good of this community and the lives of the citizens of Pitt County. So, I want to tell you personally, I thank you and I appreciate your vote of confidence. Now, we should move down to other Commissioners' comments. And we'll start with Alice Albright.
No comment, thank you.
Tom Coulson.
I have a question. It has to do with the economy. If anybody's looked at their 401, recommend that you don't if you haven't already. But it's a disaster. The likely impact of the coronavirus on the economy is going to be heavy. And here we are, we're in a reevaluation period. And I, for one, really have felt that my home price was really on the high end for what I think I could sell it for is if the county were to offer me the money that they say it's worth, I would probably try to sell it. That being given, now, I'm wondering if we ought to reconsider what the home, what the net effect's going to be of this coronavirus and whether we need to delay something that would, you know, cause it go into effect as scheduled. And Scott, I guess what my comment is, I would like that in amongst all your copious amounts of free time to try to figure out, does it make sense for us to actually have it this year, given the fact that homes are likely to take a beating?
We've had internal discussions on this already, and we would be happy to bring this back on an agenda to tell you the, maybe the cost-benefit analysis as to whether to continue down the path we're on or not. We could make that presentation before you.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom. Max, for special.
No comment.
Okay, Ann Huggins?
Well, I just want to say to all of our people on the front line, thank you for their dedication during this time of the pandemic. So, and to encourage our citizens to stay home.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Huggins, Commissioner Nunley?
No comment.
Okay, Commissioner Ward?
No comment, thank you.
All right, Commissioner White?
Yes, and I was actually going to say something similar to what Commissioner Coulson said because many of our citizens are facing financial hardships because of the economic impacts of the coronavirus. And we need to be mindful of that during the upcoming budget and take every measure possible to help lessen the burden on our taxpayers. And I am definitely in favor of putting off the property revow. They're only due every four, excuse me, every eight years according to the state. And we have one done four years ago. So, I'm definitely in favor of putting that off, if it will help our taxpayers.
Thank you. Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Thank you very much. I certainly like that suggestion that Tom and Lauren have proposed. I do think we can delay it. However, I also want to say this. I am encouraging all parents who are at home with their children to do some homeschooling of the children. That will lessen their boredness and give them something to do. The older children can help the younger children. Teach them the timetable. Teach them how to write their names. Let them read a book and tell you about it. Let's go old-school and homeschool while they are out of school. Thank you very much. Be safe and try to shelter in at home.
Thank you very much. Motion for adjournment?
Motion made.
It's been moving properly, second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Ayes have it, leading adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.